Committee meeting on June 19th. Present, we have board members Sarah Robinson, Jonathan Weinberg, myself Brenda Hastings, and we also have tonight President Jim Richards. The last instructional committee meeting of the year, school year. So we're excited to see what's happening. And I also should probably say we have staff and guests here. Kimberly Yarlot, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. John Fabrizio, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. And Janine Richards, our SEL Coordinator, Director? Director? And I'm sorry, I don't remember the names of our other people.
Kate Weeks.
Oh, Kate?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kate Weeks from Runlet.
And Tara Spencer from Abbott Downing.
And Tara Spencer. Okay, thank you. All right, I will turn this over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Wonderful to see everybody, and it's been a fabulous year working with this instructional committee. I want to say tonight we have two agenda items, so it should be relatively brief. We're going to start off with Social Emotional Learning Committee presentation, which will be comprised of making some recommendations around competencies to be eventually adopted. So I'm going to turn it over to Janine Richards, and she can go ahead and introduce her crew. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are, have a short presentation, and it'll just be an overview. Into the microphone. It's going to be an overview of, just to recap, what social emotional learning is. And then Kate, Tara, and I can kind of go through what our committees worked on over the course of the year, the competencies we'd like to bring forward, and then kind of where our committee will be going from here. So we're going to pray that audio and video work. And this is just a quick, from castle.org. What is social emotional learning?
Think about the young people in your lives and all the different places where they're learning about themselves, how to relate to others, and work together on goals. How can we intentionally create learning experiences that will help all young people develop and maintain positive relationships, become lifelong learners, and contribute to a more caring, just world? Educators, researchers, community members, families, and the students themselves agree what we need is social and emotional learning, or SEL. SEL is the process through which young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes that help us to understand ourselves, connect with others, achieve our goals, and support our communities. We all need opportunities to learn and engage in environments where we feel safe, valued, and a sense of belonging. So how does SEL help schools, families, and communities work together so that all young people have these kinds of learning experiences and achieve success in education, careers, and life? Castle's framework identifies five areas of competence that together help us develop a healthy sense of who we are, manage stress, understand the views of others, and work together to create schools and communities where everyone can grow their strengths and interests. Self-awareness is about how we think about ourselves and who we are. It includes understanding our culture, our thoughts, feelings, and what we believe we're capable of, and understanding how these things can influence our behaviors and beliefs. Self-management is the ability to manage those emotions, thoughts, and actions in different situations so that we can achieve individual and collective goals. This includes coping with stress and anxiety, persevering through challenges, and taking action to create positive change. Social awareness is how we understand others, how we learn to take different perspectives and empathize even with people who are different from us. It also includes understanding how the broader norms and systems around us influence how we develop and create a sense of belonging. Relationship skills are how we connect and engage effectively with others and how we form lasting friendships and connections. This includes communicating clearly, solving problems together, managing conflict and disagreements, and standing up for ourselves and the rights of others. Lastly, responsible decision-making is how we put it all together to make caring and constructive choices. This includes thinking critically about consequences, analyzing the impact of our actions on ourselves and others, and identifying solutions that support our collective well-being. We continue to develop and practice SEL throughout our lives and can adapt and apply these competencies across different contexts and cultures. How we develop SEL is impacted by our environment, which is why we need to work together across classrooms, schools, families, and communities. In the classroom, students can use explicitly taught SEL skills and also can practice and apply SEL during core subjects, like discussing different perspectives in social studies and language arts, or collaborative with problem-solving in science or math. SEL is most effective when supported by evidence-based programs and trusting relationships where students are treated as partners in their learning. Beyond the classroom, SEL can be intentionally promoted throughout the school experience, from the way they're greeted in the morning to how discipline practices are carried out and how adults themselves develop and model positive relationships and the SEL competencies. Outside of school, families and caregivers provide the earliest and ongoing learning and interactions for their children. So it's important that schools listen to and authentically partner with families to help shape SEL priorities and strategies for supporting their children. Similarly, when schools partner with community organizations to align their efforts, SEL opportunities can be strengthened, and students benefit even more. With SEL, we can help create schools and learning spaces where all young people feel connected, inspired, engaged, and ready to contribute to the world around them.
So this is just a visual of what you just saw. These are the five Castle competencies. There is a lot on the castle.org website if you ever want to go down a really big rabbit hole of social emotional information, it's wonderful. But when we presented this out to staff, we put the link on there for an interactive castle wheel that you can go and play around. If you click on each one, it'll bring up all the skills suggested and things like that. So it's really a wonderful resource.
Can I just interject a break? So we have this very large committee, and we had reps from every building take this back to the schools to be vetted. So when you, that's what you were referring to?
Yep.
Is that we've gone out into the field to say, what do you think about these competencies? What's your level of understanding? What kind of professional development would you need around it? What kind of feedback would you, would you want to give? So I just want to say that the schools have seen this, the teachers have seen this.
Yes.
So you spoke with teachers like at staff meetings, or did you speak with?
There's a.
Members of the committee did.
Yes.
Great.
So we made it like a larger presentation as a committee, and then each rep kind of went back to their building and had a smaller conversation during staff meetings about what this might look like, how to roll it out, what's your level of understanding, where do you need more? Yeah.
I love that video for families as well. You hear a lot about social emotional learning, but we don't always know what does someone mean by that, and that video was very.
It really breaks down the fundamental skills of what it all means, yeah. This is small text up on the big screen, but it is in your packet for your reference. We just took each one of those competencies and broke it down by definition. Okay, now we're going to talk about how it all fits together, and take it away, guys.
So I said earlier, my name's Kate Weeks. I'm a seventh grade school counselor at Runlet, but I'm also one of the MTSS coaches at our school. And so when we presented about the competencies at the, when we presented about the competencies at our staff meeting, we also tied it into a presentation about MTSS, how that is being implemented at our school, why it's important, and just tied all together. So when we think about that multi-tiered system of support, the Castle competencies that we've talked about earlier are just, you know, kind of articulating what the student should know and be able to do for that academic success, and school and civic engagement, health and wellness, and fulfilling careers. And, you know, when I was preparing today to talk about this, there's so many things that we're already doing, and I think one of our celebrations at the staff meeting was helping reassure staff that this isn't, you know, an additional thing is going to become cumbersome or something for that, that it's happening all the time. And we actually showed our pyramid of supports within the MTSS system of how we're already implementing so many of this. So with those Castle competencies, just more of that direct teaching that might need to happen time to time, but just in terms of the research showing how important this competency is leading to success in adulthood and careers, and just, you know, getting along with everybody in general and kind of breaking it down for our staff that a lot of these things are already happening already, whether it's an advisory at the middle school where everyone is universally taking part and helping provide that support.
So how does MTSS? Oh, by the way, I'm Tara Spencer, I'm the school psychologist at Abbott Downing School. And I'm passionate about social emotional learning. How does this all fit together? So we have the multi-tiered systems of support that we are already doing. So with social emotional learning at that tier one, that would be core instruction in the classroom. It could be woven through all the subjects, like the video started to say. It's a common language throughout the school. So people in the cafeteria are custodians. Everyone in the school is using the same language and talking to kids the same way. So it's that common piece throughout the school. Everyone gets, has that. When we get to tier two, those are the kids who need extra practice. They may need extra instruction in social emotional learning. So that would be how it would fit in there. It may be smaller groups, done with school counselors, school psychologists, other professionals in the building. And that's how that would fit. And then that tier three, that would be students who need more of a one-on-one social emotional instruction or support. So it's throughout. So you think about tier one, everybody's getting that. Tier two, they have the tier one plus that extra tier two piece. And those tier three kids are getting the tier one, but then they need something a little extra to help support them.
Like the Bill White people, or when you say one-to-one, is it just maybe assistant?
It could be that, it could be instructional assistant, it could be a Bill White professional. It could be, I work with several students who have IEPs, and we work on social emotional skills.
Could be one-on-one with a school counselor.
Right.
Can I just jump? It could also be, we also have, this is the part about community connections that you saw when they did the video too. And this is Riverbend. This is some of our other, other outside, you know, sometimes outside therapists consulting with us. Sometimes we, the middle school is, has a really strong wraparound where they work with community agencies who come in every other week, and they, they meet and talk about kids that are at that tier three level. So it's kind of that whole, that's when it goes intensive in the school, but also beyond the school, really involving the family, really involving all community members.
Would this also be the, the program you're working on for next year, I'm assuming, at Garrison?
Possibly, possibly the MAP, the MAP program, the Middle School Alternative Program, possibly, yeah. But that's even, probably, it's a little more intense than this. It's when you get really beyond this. This is kind of our school-based part.
But you might work on some of these things.
Yeah, oh, definitely. That's all it's based on. It's a hundred percent based on that. So it's very good, very good connection there, that is based on that.
So when we talk just about the why, about the CSD SEL competencies, and, you know, just about the responsibility to provide students, again, all the text is up on the screen. And one text that I found on the Castle website that really just provided a lot of clarity as well was just the quote that while SEL alone will not solve longstanding and deep-seated inequities in the education system, it can create the conditions needed for individuals in school to examine and interrupt inequitable policies and practices, create more inclusive learning environments, and reveal and nurture the interests and assets of all individuals. And I think that's something that, you know, working with the kids every day, that's any opportunity to help find the strengths of students and help build them up. And something about the Castle competencies is great is that, you know, it's from early, early years all the way through 12 to have continuity within our district. As the middle school, we receive kids from all different schools. So to have that common language and know that everybody is starting off as those little guys working on that, for them to see the progression down the road, it just allows us to have a ton of opportunity for growth by starting with this foundational, kind of adopting of the Castle competencies.
So the how piece, I talked about how everyone in the school community would be using the same language. We do that at Abbott Downing. We have the, we have a program that we all use that same language. And everyone's had the training.
You mentioned you're all using the same program?
Within our school.
Is that something that, so that we can keep the continuity? Is that all, are we looking at a program for all schools? Are you looking at each school using a different program with different, that I think would be getting in the way of trying to keep the continuity for the students getting to Runlet?
I think if you're focusing on those five core areas, it doesn't really matter which program you use, as long as you're building those same skills. I mean, I, I know that there's some districts, like Londonderry, does have Choose Love kindergarten through 12th, and they have that same language, and they do that. I know it's tough when you get to the, the different schools and they have preferences over what the school, like.
The identity of their school.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so you have like different neighborhoods, different family makeups, and so those specific communities, you can tweak it to meet the specific needs of the demographics that exist within that building. But everybody's going to have that common vocabulary. All the words are going to be the same, it's going to mean the same thing. It's just tailoring to the needs of the student population. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, like the approach and what the curriculum may be. Like there's, Castle has tons of ideas about evidence-based different curriculums, but I think there's that balance and Concord has such a rich culture in those neighborhood schools and how to embrace that and understand that each school has its own culture and identity, but everybody kind of working towards the same competencies so that regardless of what necessarily the tool or curriculum is, everybody's getting those same foundational skills.
And if you go on the Castle website, they have a list of different programs that meet their criteria.
So as long as maybe it was one of those programs. John, a financial question I have is, we try to keep an eye on, on the responsibilities that we have to do for the taxpayers. Is it, is it more expensive to have each school doing a different program? Or to have all of them doing one program?
So I'll begin, but this is kind of one of those things that falls into tier one too. So I really want Kim to kind of be part of this too, where we come into curriculum instruction and part of that too. It really falls kind of on, you know, both sides of the ledger here and what we're doing. And I think that some of these programs are at no cost. Some of these programs can be extraordinary cost. I think it's, there's a balance between both. And I, I think that, I think that, we'll talk about a roadmap down the road. I don't want to get into the weeds on this slide. But really, what it is, is again, back to, I think, I think Kate said it really well, that we want that common language of what our, what our overall competencies are and how they're interacted in there. And based on some multiple factors, as Sarah mentioned, we're, we're proposing that we adopt the competencies. And then.
We'll work out the program.
And then look at the program, are they research-based? Do they meet the competencies? Are they, are they teaching the skills we want them to teach? Those are the parts that are important. So when it comes to the financial things, it varies. There, there is a scale this big when it comes to some of these programs. And that is a considering factor, of course, of what we're going to do and where we're going to do it.
I was going to say, it's nice too, because when we presented this to the staff, this was the piece that they were really like, we're already doing these things.
Right.
And so it wasn't adding on something new for them to do, but it also validated what they were doing and all the work they had been doing for a long time.
Where does responsive classroom come into this?
So at the middle school, we, our advisory teachers, you know, follow loosely, you know, responsive classroom. I think there's pieces that, again, kids move seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and sometimes they may have a lesson that they already got in sixth. So there's kind of the picking and choosing that. But not last year, but I believe the year before, everyone, the whole staff was trained in the middle school responsive classroom, and we have that as a text. And that is one of the evidence-based programs in Castle.
And the elementary schools are still using that?
Beaver Meadow School is piloting Fly Five. And that is a responsive classroom program. It does come with a cost. And so there, we just finished an evaluation survey that we are sending out to, to staff and determining if it met, it's meeting their needs, and it's going to continue the pilot the following year. So in this roadmap, the next steps, 2024, 25, would be to start to look at programs and determine, do we need to be more alike, or is it okay that we're, we're different? How does it impact Runlet students if they have different prompts for, you know, sort of self-regulation prompts or self-management prompts? So we'll, we'll go there, but for this year, we're just looking at.
I would have thought we'd already done this.
You would have thought we had?
Yeah, because we, schools have been doing this for so long.
Yeah.
I'm surprised we haven't adopted competencies before this.
Yeah.
I'm grateful we're doing it.
Absolutely.
And like you said, it's just validating the work we're already doing and making something tangible for how we can assess how kiddos are retaining it.
Absolutely.
So we talked a little bit about this, you know, not that additional add-on, but just, you know, we talked about it before, the validation that utilizing that common language, taking that time. And just a huge part of this is that student voice. And one of the things that we've really enjoyed, I don't speak for both of us, but is that committee comes together and it's from, you know, people from representatives from all different schools. So it's great to hear about, you know, what things are being implemented at different schools, how we can work collaboratively. And obviously, at the middle school, everyone coming to us and then sending off to the high school. Just that communication and that lang, conversation has been super rich, I think, in helping as a part of this because it validates and then it helps get us excited. I mean, we're passionate about this, and the committee is as well. We're two that are representing a very, very large committee that's been in this practice for a really long time, and it's exciting work.
I'm glad to hear all the schools are working together. Are all the grade levels working together as well? Do you have somebody from each grade level on the committee?
Each grade level at the, at the SEL committee?
K to 12?
I'm not sure that we have every grade level, but we have definitely, we have elementary, Runlet.
Expertise from each grade level.
We do.
You know, but not an actual teacher rep from each grade level.
And people are highly, highly invested in it, really good conversations. One of the things that we did do was kind of a fidelity assessment. We came up with a rubric and had all of the groups break into their school-based groups and then go through the fidelity checklist and like, how and where in your curriculum do you cover this, 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 this around the competencies? And so again, people felt that they were doing this work and also identified areas where they could improve upon, so.
Okay, great.
Very active.
So one of the big pieces of MTSS is making database decisions. But SEL data is hard, and it's hard to quantify. And it isn't always hard data, you know? It can be observation, and it can be, take a really long time. We're not going to see results overnight. So even though there isn't always hard data to turn to to see whether this is truly working, there are a list of things that we can look at to see if things are getting better. Teacher feedback, transfer of skills in different pockets. Like if you are a classroom teacher and you're using a lot of teachable moments, maybe you're doing some actual SEL lessons in your classroom, and you're seeing those skills transfer to the lunchroom, or transfer to the hallways, or maybe the bathroom was, you know, a hotspot for some behavior stuff. Seeing those transfer of skills is an important data point. Teacher and student observably have improved skills. So we didn't really talk much about this, but SEL is great for teachers and staff too. It's not, we're not just trying to, you know, help students regulate. It's also adults need some help regulating too. And using this language and teaching to the kids that you're a partner in this work. So it really does help the adults just as much. Attendance and truancy rates obviously will improve. Graduation rates improve. SABR score, which is our universal social emotional screener, those scores should increase. ODRs are office discipline referrals. And SWISS is the program in which we use to track those. And then suspensions, obviously, we want to see go away.
And I would like to add to nurse visits.
Yes.
I know that, you know, nurses frequently have kiddos that have belly aches, and the hope is too, to decrease those visits.
Do we have a, maybe not line-to-line comparison, but as we go through each of the competencies, if we can go back a slide, can we see which corresponds with which of the outcomes we aim for? If that makes sense?
There isn't like a one-to-one correlation, but I don't know if it would be helpful, but there is like an alignment of Castle competencies to what that would equate to on like the SABR screener. Like what, what questions would improve if this skill were more attained? And we could do it that way.
So I, I guess what I was thinking, because I know probably for restorative justice, that would probably be for office referrals, I'm guessing, maybe, or no? For less office referrals using the restorative justice practices under the competencies?
Yes, less suspensions, yep.
Got it.
And this is our, our last slide, just kind of the path that we've been on. Certainly prior to John, Kim, and I, there was an SEL Behavior Task Force that was, a lot of individuals worked for a lot of years on doing justice work and trying to kind of get it off the ground. And really, it's given us a beautiful launching off point to keep the SEL committee going. We kind of resurrected our SEL committee since COVID, the beginning of the school year, and have had monthly meetings to do this competency work. We then, as we said before, brought a presentation to each of the buildings. The committee reps provided an overview for their staff during staff meetings, opportunities for questions, concerns, validation of work that's already being done. This is not a new program that anyone's trying to put on them. We are here, June 2023, to the instructional committee. Two events over the summer, working on report cards, which we're not to the point where we would ever be assessing SEL competencies. We're talking about work habits and what does that look like for a learner? Those conversations will happen. And then also, we eat, both the elementary and the middle and high have MTSS retreats to go over how SEL fits within the MTSS framework and how we can kind of review our own data and make improvements for next year. And then the SEL committee will continue, hoping to name some key skills under each of these competencies. How do we measure our progress? More to your point of like, at what point do we know that this is really working? And what does it correlate to? And how do we include more student voice in this process? Making sure that we're instructing and partnering with them the way they want to be partnered with. And then way off in the horizon down there, 24, 25, is when we'll look at the programs that are being used and reviewing the alignment to the competencies and how that all kind of works.
Awesome.
Questions?
I do have a question. But first, just like a humble brag about the Concord School District. I have two elementary-aged kiddos, and they are utilizing social emotional learnings in our home amongst their friend group. It's very clear to me the difference between when I went to elementary school and how my kiddos assess interpersonal conflict and how they resolve it on their own. So like high fives all around to our teaching staff. Like we're very lucky in our district. I'm curious about how we, like what kind of thought process there is around engaging with SEL within homes and bringing parents into this practice? I don't think our, I don't think our teachers are necessarily struggling. We have a lot of open minds in our district about the necessity of this for everybody's learning environment. And the kiddos are taking it on quickly, at least at our elementary level. And, but I can imagine parents who are not familiar with this kind of programming. It's new language. Sometimes there is pushback on new ideas. Not that SEL is new by any means, but I'm curious about any conversations around bringing parents into the conversation in a more intentional way so that they feel like they are a part of this conversation, there's maybe less resistance to some new ideas.
I think that's super important, and, you know, as a parent myself of a student in the school district too, I appreciate that voice, and I think there's great opportunity with this. And, you know, I think about in the past at Runlet, many years ago, we had something called the Parent Academy that offered workshops that were, it was a number of months, and it was during a Saturday morning, and it was nine to 12, and people could sign up. And I think just inviting people to be part of that conversation and be really transparent that when we talk about SEL, we're talking about those life skills too, that I think sometimes the language alone can, you know, get people defensive or worried and what, what's happening or why is this happening? And just talking about those life skills, about getting along with somebody, whether it's at work in that group project, that you learn some of those, you know, self-management. self-management, self-direction in middle school or high school. How did that transfers into the, um, the workplace? So I think building opportunities, I think that should be a big part of our committee's work is, is being intentional with that parent involvement and involving parents to be a part of it.
Love to see back to school nights.
Yep.
Um, you know, have parents really give a presentation on, and this is what some of the, the skills your children will be working on this year. And we will invite you at different times during the year to come in and, and have the same lessons. So that.
One of the beautiful things, and we're wrapping up, um, a process called the Tiered Fidelity Inventory, which is kind of looking at our M T S S framework. And one of the highlights of that is the two-way parent communication. And how are we forming our decisions at a building level about what we're going to focus on and what our expectations are going to be? And that's really rooted in the language we're using for S E L. So the, it's all very connected. So in, in talking to all of the schools over the last month doing the inventory, that is a goal for every school is like, how do we, like, we're great at like sending information home. Like parents are informed, but like, how do we get that information back? How is that, uh, a reciprocal relationship? Um, to make sure that there are those opportunities to have parents in and really have discussions about it. And not only rely on our P T O or P T A in a building, but like really go global with the whole building and district, um, to involve parents.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
So a couple of things to that, just to add to that is Lori Hart, who is our, uh, she's retiring, but she is our, um, early childhood coordinator. And Lori birthed through eight years old, um, works with families, goes out, um, into the community, has home visitors that are with her. They utilize the S E L competencies and they utilize this model, working with families in their home, getting resources to families, doing all those tier-two and tier-three supports directly out in the community too. So it starts really early for us and, um, it's reinforced throughout. Um, one of our buildings had a consultant that we work with, Polly Bath this year, do several series of parent nights, um, over at Beaver Meadow, um, with their families around, um, S E L and social emotional regulation with the families too. So it's, it's starting, it's starting to take hold and move forward, I think. You know, I, I think that, you know, um, again, this is the year after COVID. And I think that, you know, after moving into it, we're starting to get back into some of these things, inviting more people in and having more, um, big community events to do some of these things.
Is the contract with Polly Bath next year too?
I'm hoping.
Noted. All right, well, thank you guys.
Thank you very much for your hard work. We really appreciate it.
How's, thank you.
How's Connor doing?
Love that kid.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, especially on the, at the end of the year.
Right?
I know, seriously. Last Monday of the year. So my understanding is that, um, there would be, um, they would, they would like to have a motion from the instructional committee to move this forward to the full board in July for, um, adoption.
So moved.
Second.
That's easy. Easiest motion I've seconded outside of adjournment.
You made the motion.
I mean.
You made it.
Yeah, I did make it, yeah. I'll take ownership, that's fine.
Second was Jonathan. And we have a quorum, so I think we can just do a voice, while those in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? We will move this to the full board for consideration. In fact, that's going to have to be one of you, because I won't be here in July.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, okay.
So we're good. We got your back. All right, I'll write up the notes before you move on.
But thank you.
I would greatly appreciate that.
Okay, great. All right, we will move this forward.
Thank you very much. And it's just the competencies.
Just the competencies, right.
Okay, cool. Thank you. So likewise, um, this year we have a very, very, very large professional development committee. And, and John, you're going to weigh in on any time, because we both work with the professional development committee. Um, we meet monthly, there's representation from all schools and all, um, all ages, I mean, all grades. And really what we've done is establish professional development from, you know, throughout this last year, do, um, it's kind of a, a survey or reflection about how the professional development went, collecting that data, processing the data and determining what we would like for, um, both our instructional assistants and for our professional staff. So we have landed on a, a place for us to look at the professional development days for the coming year. This is just a broad stroke. There's nothing that has to be voted on or anything. This is sort of an informational session, just a, uh, just a quick glimpse at what we're going to be looking at doing next year. So, um, part of, of the way that we tried to frame this work when working with, you know, a large group of stakeholders was how do we say, um, how do we like determine priorities? And, um, so what we have done is we've said that we're going to use a strategic plan to guide our work. So if an activity falls into any of these particular, um, priorities, the equities, curriculum instruction and assessment, social emotional learning, safety, communication and facilities, then it could be vetted through the professional development committee. So we sort of had to put parameters around professional development. Otherwise, there's so few days and it could be just picking cherries from, yeah, unyielding, yep, picking cherries from a tree. So, um, and then we also, um, established what's already happening. And you've seen this slide in the past, this is, these are things that are already happening that we want to maintain and build upon. And so that's all the schools becoming really well-versed with professional learning communities. And that's a place where teachers come together and look at student performance data and make decisions on next steps for instruction. And it's sort of a model for doing that. Um, we all, clearly we're already involved in social emotional learning and the M T S S multi, multi-tiered systems for support. We have really great practices going on at the high school with restorative justice. And our next step is to bring that down to the middle school because that's been proven to be a really great practice, uh, reducing the number of suspensions and detentions and, um, helping students to build strategies for, um, recovery after making a poor choice. Clearly one of our priorities is around equity and diversity. Um, Universal Design for Learning is an instructional program that we look at reducing barriers for students accessing instruction. And it's, um, professional development that's provided through an organization called CAST. It's free from the state. And we have our high school, including C R T C, um, has, have been getting, um, training all year long from persons from the CAST Association. And we want to make sure that we bring that down into the middle school and the high school. It really helps to create a framework and a mindset for educators to look at their instructional practices and making sure that no one is being left out or unable to access the instruction. Um, so it's kind of a self-reflective process for teachers. Um, clearly we've been doing curriculum review and competency work. As you saw that the social studies competencies and math competencies were put through, so we'll continue with that work. Um, English language learners, we're doing an, um, audit. John, do you want to speak to that?
Uh, we've been work, we've been working for about a year now with, um, um, very, um, different kind of consultants. It's called, um, they're from Upriver and Dana Garrish French is our consultant. And, um, we used our title three money about a year ago to, to bring her in because, um, you know, when you have, Concord's unique with our, with our languages. They're not your typical, you know, Spanish, uh, speaking or, um, you know, maybe, um, Mandarin speaking that you would see in other parts of the state. We have, you know, seventeen different languages spoken in our, in, in our schools. And coming in, um, that English language development and that, 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 um, listening and speaking and writing and all those factors that come into E L L education, um, is a little different here. So it was kind of like, are we doing the right thing? Do we have the right staffing? Are we, um, are we doing the best for our families? What does our family engagement look like? All those things that have to happen around, um, English language learners, um, is, uh, something we've been working on. And, uh, we started a leadership group. It's different leaders from each level. Um, Kim, myself and, and, um, and Quincy were on that group and we're doing a book study. Um, and, uh, it's very interesting. We're starting a, a, a new, um, kind of chapter in learning about what is good E L L instruction across. There's a lot of training that has to happen in that though, for our tier-one instructors when we complete this process. So I'll have, um, in the fall, I'll have, um, something more tangible, reports and goals and kind of like I did with the special ed review. I'll come forward with kind of a continuous improvement process that we're looking for in doing that. But we're meeting over the summer, spending some time with all the data we collected this year by going in and doing observations, surveys for parents, focus groups with students. We've been doing this all year. So that's going to come forward and we'll have kind of the what after and then what are next steps for you, um, as we move forward.
And you can see that there's a through line with universal design for learning and the process with E L L, because it's again, looking at barriers, a through line with curriculum, a through, through line with equity and diversity.
Mm-huh.
And then of course we have assessment work. You know, we brought in I Ready at the ninth grade and the fifth grade will bring it to fourth grade, so we'll need to continue professional development around that. So these are kind of some guardrails around the P D and what's already in place. It's, you know, none of these are new initiatives. Um, and, uh, that's really important to know because that's some, a place where we struggle, where we have too many initiatives going on. And, you know, it creates teacher burnout and it creates in, like inconsistencies and construct, in, um, implementation. And, um, so this also has served as a way for us to look at our P D monies and say, where will we be expending our monies? Because, um, it's not a huge pot of money. And we have some people wanting to get some summer work done for P D and it really said, well, it's got to fall into these buckets.
Yeah.
Kim and I refer this as kind of the fence posts and saying, if it's not within these fence posts, w, it's a good idea, but we can't support it through the, the funding we have right now because it doesn't align with our strategic plan and it doesn't align with one of these priority areas. So it's let people know that we do respect and like your ideas and you have your own contracted money that if you want to go out and explore, go explore and use that. But from a district point of view and what we're going to offer up, we're staying within this framework.
Do you have a, a plan, um, you, you mentioned I Ready, for us to be able to see the data collected this year so we can see the, the growth or?
We do have a plan to bring that data to you as well as the, uh, the SASS data.
Okay.
Um, the New Hampshire, uh, assessment.
Right.
So we've, we're just on the receiving end of that data at this point. We had some kids that were late to take exams and other reports are coming in right now. They're going home with parents. Parents also received a link to find their students', um, scores. But we want to be, present very honest data about student performance to the board.
When, do you think we could expect to see that?
The state, the state data hasn't been released yet, so we are, to be direct on that.
They're just, are they just taking or just finished taking?
No, we, we have our local data, we don't have state data yet.
We don't have the state data.
So until state data comes out and I'd like to give you.
But on the I Ready, you should be able to see the students from the year.
Yeah, I Ready can, but we want the comparison between SASS and I Ready too. It's important, there's a, there's an important correlation there too that we'll talk about in some of this that when the state data comes out.
Do you think July, August?
I would think August would be a great time for us to bring it to you.
I won't hold you to it.
It's, I, I'd be very honest, it's been hard to predict when things are coming and rolling from us from the, from, from, just, there is no, they don't have, um, fence posts and parameters on, on kind of when they'll present us with information.
Right. And I'm, I'm sure you're expecting to see good data, but it, I Ready's not inexpensive. And if we're going to be investing limited monies in there, we want to know that it's actually making a difference.
Yes, and we, um, have just finished our sixth data dive, because we've been doing triennial data dives of each of the buildings. And, um, at the, we have pulled up the SASS data next to the, the ones that has been, what's been released to us, the SASS data and the I Ready. And we're finding that there's real strong correlation between the two.
That's good.
In the areas of E L A and math. And now what's really important is, so you're a teacher and so what? What are you going to do with that data? And how are you going to look at your instructional practices and how are you going to look at?
Especially now that you don't have those students. They've moved on.
Yes. However, the good thing about doing fifth grade is all the sixth grade teachers have that data of the fifth graders coming in and have asked for the I Ready data so that they know how to group their students.
Great.
And likewise, the ninth grade English and math teachers have already live, have the eighth grade performance data.
Okay, good.
So it's really going to help with clustering students. So we have some, um, professional development that's going to have to take place, um, with these, in particular, the first two bullets. So, uh, we've had some issues with Teacher Ease, which is our grading platform. And we put together a commi, committee this year, so year-long committee to look at an alternative to Teacher Ease. And we landed on Schoology. However, by the time we landed on Schoology, it was May and it was too, or too late for us to expect that we could get, uh, all staff up and running with it. So we've decided to do a slow rollout and have it be exploratory with the platform for this coming year. And then, uh, put all of our professional development into the following year, uh, with the implementation of that platform. So it's just a trade for one platform for, for another. And then we've, long time, years and years and years and years have used, most districts have used Performance Plus. It came out of the district as a free program for us to be able to, um, dump assessment data into. And it is, and like SASS would automatically be uploaded into it. I Ready's already automatically uploaded into this platform. It's now dissolving as of June thirtieth, so we needed to find a fix catch that we can not lose all that data. And we again, looked at various, um, various platforms and ended up with EduClimber. EduClimber will also take the Sabers data, which is the, um, student wellness, health and wellness data. Um, it uploads, it, um, speaks to Power School and, um, all the data is transferred daily. Um, however, this was, this was, had to be a quick turnaround and a lot of districts were left scrambling for what are they going to do and how are they not going to lose the data? So EduClimber is going to, has been purchased. It's not going to be a huge heavy lift for staff, but there will need to be some training into, it's going to, they're going to be inputting the data just like they did with, with, uh, Performance Plus. However, it's a different platform and getting, getting to know it.
Is Performance Plus going away completely or it's no longer free?
Oh, it hasn't been free for quite a while now.
Okay, so it's just going away?
And then it's going away. It's been bought by Renaissance, I believe.
They're not supporting it anymore. So basically what you have, you get. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And that's kind of where they, that's what they do when they phase these out and you have, um, a period of time to get your data out of there, it goes away. So we kind of had to make this decision and do it. And the nice thing about EduClimber, and I could certainly have Janine talk about this because I'm going to credit her, she's the one that really did a lot of the research on this and brought it forward to us. So, um, I think that it gives you a, a, a student profile where we've had to pull data from multiple sources to have it in front of you. This will be, you call up, the student's picture will be there, it'll be all of his grading, all of his SASS scores, I Ready scores, Sabers data, all in one platform in front of you. So when you're doing like a, uh, you know, a, a student study team, where you're looking at the success of a student and where they may be some of those barriers, you have it in one place. So it's, uh, going to take some time to get up, so we're very fluent at it, but I think it's something that's going to move us forward.
And that Performance Plus dat, data is being retrieved as we speak, given that June thirtieth is right around the corner. And then another area for, for professional development, we'll be looking at, um, training teachers with the new report card that will be developed this summer. So.
That's a lot to put on staff when they come back. They're going to be like, ah.
So, um, it is a lot. And again, with Schoology, we're going to not even look at until January with educators. EduClimber, um, we've already done the heavy lifting with putting the data in and they won't have any data to put in until they start to.
Just learning how to put it back in.
Yes, yeah. So the big piece will getting the, um, the new report card into the hands of teachers. And that will be on a different platform. It will no longer be in Google.
Okay.
So, yeah. So with this, that then you, thus you see that we're not adding any.
Are you looking, when you say report card, I'm just curious, are you looking for one report card for the entire district? Like for elementary?
K through five.
K through five, yeah.
K through two might look a little different.
Okay.
But we're looking at going to trimesters and.
So K to two would be different, three to five would be different, six to eight would be different?
Yes, they'll be, they'll look more alike, just that there'll be some small discreet kind of things that, so for example, one of the competencies for English Language Arts is, um, they have a, they, it just for kindergarten would be a reading competency they, it's just for kindergarten, would be a reading competency that's only kindergarten-based, so we wouldn't be assessing that for first and second. So, there's, it's very discreet, kind of. So, we'll be, hopefully, that will be up and running, and we'll get, we'll really try to use a train-the-trainer model, where we get staff who have worked on the report cards to do some of the training at their buildings. You know, all administrators are going to be working on the report cards, so they'll have the knowledge.
And you're getting decent participation this summer?
Pretty good, yeah.
Yay, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
I know people are tired, so, yeah.
So, I always appreciate it when they are willing to come in in the summertime, too.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How about, with regards to report card, how about communicating the changes to the parents? When will that be done, and how are you going to be doing that? Because that's going to be on everybody's mind, because I think they, many of them aren't even yet comfortable with the current one, so.
So, I've hired a woman from NHLI, New Hampshire Learning Initiative, and she does this work all over the state. And she has some model products for us, and she's going to help us with developing a parent letter to parents. And then, we'll work with Tom Crum, and then Krista Mers, our assessment persons, to be able to do like a, like a video for parents about the report card.
Well, that's great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Training, kind of a training video, and then a letters to parents.
Awesome.
So, no rest for the weary.
No break.
Yikes.
No breaks.
Any other questions about the professional development? Kind of gives you a bird's-eye view.
Yeah, very exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, I did miss one slide that, I think it's on here, though. It just gave out the dates. I think I just went through that slide. The very, very last slide gives you the one, two, three, four, five dates that PD occurs.
Great.
And are these all dates that we're able to attend? I know previous years, we have.
The 28th, we used to do the welcome back. The board did, I remember, but.
You would do the first date.
The first date?
Yeah. All, you know, all group welcome, the 28th, yes.
Good to know.
If you're interested in adding a date there to your calendar.
Always, always interested. Are you kidding me?
So, that concludes our agendas for tonight's presentations. And I really appreciate this Instructional Committee. It's been wonderful to be on, and hope that it's been informative.
Very much so.
Very. Any other thoughts, members? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.